A few minutes overextended in our session. I'd like to call the City Council Work Session to order. Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
I believe I'm here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Present.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Present.
Councilmember Soller.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. Presentation and discussion in agreement with Train Technologies.
Ted will come up, yep.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Ted Wolf, Public Works Director. Today, we're going to give a presentation regarding the solar change to dark sky. Heather Hodgman was going to be here, but she was unmade unavailable, so I'm pinch hitting here. So, I hope this goes well. The urban dark skies lighting retrofit phase one. It's retrofitting lot fixtures, walkways, sconces, ballards, and similar fixtures with LED lamps for the Police Department and City Hall, providing and installing a new cloud-based digital lighting control system for the Police Department exterior lights, and also providing and installing an outside level photo sensor and the controller, which will be used to determine the outside ambient light levels. The digital lighting control system will integrate with the existing controls at the MGC. It will allow for remote access and operation to allow staff to control the light automation with on-off dimming control. The control system has ability to be customizable to each building's particular needs and growth. The grant was from the U.S. Department of Energy and a block grant in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars, or seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. City contingency funds will be used for the remaining amount of the project. Train will also be assisting with the SRP rebates. Staff respectfully request entering into the agreement with Train Technologies using the Omnia Partners Racine County Cooperative Contract Number 3341 in the amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents.
That's included, that seventy-six thousand is part of that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the grant portion funded, and the rest will be the general fund portion. So, about twenty-seven thousand dollars general fund.
And is that what we expected budget-wise and fiscal?
Yeah, we'll be using some contingency funds, but we're wanting to get it done before the end of the year to expend this grant funds and then those other general funds. So, that's also why we have it on for the consent agenda unless the City Council would like to move that. But the intent is so we can get the project expended and completed before the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions up here?
Yeah, I do have one. On the lot lights themselves, are you familiar with the LED lights? Is there a way to have them so they're not as bright? You know, our conventional lights have a more of a dimmer hue to them. They're not that bright, just obnoxiously bright. Even though they're dark sky friendly, I've seen a couple areas where streetlights have been changed out, and you look and you go, golly, how the heck can this be dark sky friendly when it's so stinking bright, straight down?
Well, we are going to change to LED, so they'll have a different hue to them, color, and we will be able to control the brightness.
Good.
With remotely. So, we can customize different light amounts, whatever parking lot.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
Okay, well, go get it done. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Move on to the next presentation, discussion, proposal, resolution 24-04. Oh, you're back.
I'm back. Raquel, we'll be here to present the next two items.
Okay.
Good evening. Raquel Schatz from the Public Works Department, project engineer. Here to discuss Resolution 2404, IGA amendment with ADOT. This IGA amendment is for the pedestrian project and roadway improvements on Delaware Drive from Sixteenth Avenue to Broadway Avenue. These are very similar to all the projects that we've done in Public Works regarding the MAG funds. So, very briefly, in 2019, we applied for an application in which we were awarded two point six million dollars for construction, and that was a combined effort between two different committees in MAG, the Active Transportation Group and the Pinell County Arterial Program. In 2020, we were able to, MAG then awarded us about four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for design. We applied for this in the winter through MAG closeout funds. MAG closeout funds is the only source fund that we can use to obtain design funds. And then, just recently, as we're getting close to the hundred percent stage of these design plans, it was brought to our attention that we were short construction funds because when we applied for these applications in 2019 and we get to 2023, 2024, the construction costs have obviously increased. So, we applied again for MAG closeout funds in the winter 2023 in which MAG has awarded us roughly three million dollars to obtain the remaining portion for the construction cost. Existing conditions right now, this will probably be like the fourth segment of Delaware Drive and the last segment of Delaware Drive, that is only two lanes. All the other segments are currently three lanes with bicycle lanes, and the portion between Sixteenth Avenue and Broadway is just two lanes and that big, deep channel to the east, to the west. The improvements that we are seeking to be done, like I mentioned, that we were, we had went through two different committees to get funding. So, through the CMAC funds, we were able to obtain authorization to do sidewalks. So, we'll have new sidewalks on the entire west side, and we'll do replacements of all the cracked and all the bad sidewalks on the east side. We're also going to include ADA sidewalk ramps to make sure that all of those are all ADA compliant. The same with curb and gutter, all new curb and gutter on the west side, and bicycle lanes. So, in order to make up some of the funding sources, the second grant that we did was through the Pinell County Bridge Arterial Program in which we were able to do a roadway expansion to get that third lane in there, to do streetlights on the entire west side, and to do storm drain. We're going to put two fifty-four inch pipes where the channel is, bury that channel, make that road safe again for the people in the neighborhood to safely back out without having to fall in the ditch. Cost estimate, like I mentioned, this is going to be our amendment number one. So, the original amendment showed us with a five point seven percent match of one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And anything over that amount, we had a cap on that amount, so that's why you see a hundred percent city contribution of three hundred and eighty-one thousand. So, this amendment shows a credit of that three hundred and eighty-one thousand and our five point seven percent of the three point one million dollars that, per this amendment, leaving our city share at the three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, with that, we are, I mean, we're back to our normal five point seven percent as opposed to with the original IGA amendment, we were closer to twelve percent. So, a six point two million dollar project, we're getting for, you know, close to four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. So, with this new IGA amendment, like I mentioned, the city share is going to be three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars and sixty-seven, three hundred and fifty-four, sixty-seven dollars. Public Works recommends approval of this Resolution 2404, and this will be on your consent agenda for May 7th. We are kind of pressed on timing for this one because its federal funds need to be obligated. ADOT does have a June 1st, 2024 deadline to get these paid out. So, any questions?
You said on the consent agenda for May?
May 7th.
May 7th, okay.
Raquel, question. So, if I understand correctly, you're asking for additional federal funds to cover the increased construction costs? And looking at the other narratives, due to delay, construction, delay in construction design?
No, it's due to the increased construction costs. So, when we first started the application in 2019, we used 2019 unit construction cost numbers. So, since then, since, you know, 2024, I hate to say the word post-COVID, but we all know that all the construction costs, well, everything's gone up increasingly, like by a lot. So, our project back in 2019, which was probably about two point three, maybe a three million dollar project, has now, is now increased twice as much, so yeah.
So, we saw this in a recent project, just in one that we totally controlled, which is our lovely dog park. And it's great to see J2 here with us, but in a matter of a year, cost and the inability to be able to perform went from like, I forget what it was, Matt, eight hundred thousand to one point two million. Liz is here to answer. So, to see over a five-year period go from three point million, three, thirty-seven, was that what the estimate was?
Correct.
To six, seven, in five years is unbelievable, but it's the reality of what's going on in the construction world.
And it's happening with all the construction projects that are going through these MAG processes as well, too. We were, we submitted two projects for additional federal funds, and that was two of fourteen projects through all of the MAG entities.
Okay, so is this coming out of our contingency funds then?
That net new, Matt can answer that, but the net new for us is the three hundred and fifty-four thousand?
And it's coming out of HERF.
And it's coming out of HERF.
So, we're drawing down, what is it? How much federal funds, Raquel? Almost six million.
Correct.
That's a pretty smoking deal.
Yeah, half a million for...
Pretty impressive.
Six hundred million worth of work.
Yep.
I guess it's just, like, I'm only trying to say this delay and this period of time it takes to get this done, is this...
Oh, you mean in actual to get the project done?
Yeah.
Maybe we could speak to that, how long it took so long.
So, because it's a federal project, it has to go through, it has to obtain federal clearances. There's environmental clearance, utility clearance, right-of-way clearance, and materials clearances. And typically, environmental takes the longest. And then, but because these are federal projects, they need to be managed by a self-agency government, which is only eight in the state, and ADOT being one of them. So, ADOT, their time schedule for design is anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four months, so...
Look how long it took us to get the rodeo ground.
For Idaho.
I was just going to say, how long it takes to get a road out to the dam.
So, the design, I mean, it takes a while just because it's not only, you know, working with ADOT and their consultant, their consultant, but it's obtaining these clearances through the feds as well, too.
So, what you're saying is there's a lot of people and a lot of hurdles that you had to get through to...
Oh, absolutely.
Move forward in each step.
Yeah, in fact, we're still working through some of the utility clearances as well, too, so...
Is it possible to put into the planning, if you know it's going to be eighteen to twenty-four months and you know construction costs are going to be up by ten percent, you could build that into the, into that number that you submit, is that...
Well, we can do that, I mean, but, I mean, we just don't know what that inflation factor is going to be. I mean, we tried doing it with this one, actually, but, you know, we started in 2019, and, you know, you just don't know what's going to happen when it's ready to go.
Hey, Peter, we need to take our ire out as taxpayers on the federal government taking so long.
I have a whole other thought on that, but not for here.
And the city did delay it another year, too, because we didn't have the money for the design, so we waited another year to obtain, to request additional funds through MAG closeout process so that we can obtain that additional four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the design.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
It's a big cost.
Two different, one, a statement regarding material costs. In my industry, with what I do, our pipe material costs go up roughly almost ten percent every month, month.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. You know, how do you bid a project that's not going to break ground for another ten to twelve months?
Yeah.
A year and a half. The other actual question I have regarding the project itself, I assume that you're taking the entire roadbed down to air dirt and replacing all of the asphalt, or...
It'll just, it'll be a mill, like a two-inch mill and overlay, and then the actual pavement that we are adding new will be a full depth.
So, it's similar to what we did with Main Street? We took that down this...
Yeah, just to the two inches, so in that way that the finish, Matt, is all the same.
Thank you.
Not a problem. All right, well, the next one is very similar to this one. It's just a different roadway.
Yep, okay, presentation, discussion, 2406.
Yep, so this is an IGA amendment with ADOT for Winchester Road from Twenty-Ninth Avenue to Southern Avenue. And this is actually going to be the second amendment with ADOT for the same road project. So, in 2020, we did receive funding through the Pinell County Arterial Road Program for an amount of three point four million dollars. This program has a one point four million dollar cap, so we try to max this one out as much as possible, making the city portion more than the five point seven percent. So, again, the same timeline as the Delaware project. It came to our attention with, by the ADOT consultant that we were in need of additional funds. We applied in the winter 2023 to MAG. We received about three point five million dollars for construction, for the increased construction costs. So, the existing conditions, again, this is another segment of Winchester Road that hasn't been developed. There's portions near the end of it at Twenty-Ninth Avenue where it's wide enough, but then you can see here, you've got some driveways that go over pipe. You've got other driveways that are just kind of small, and then the misalignment at Southern Avenue. The alignment at Southern Avenue doesn't line up with the portion north of that, which I don't believe there's been any accidents yet, but this is a safety concern that Public Works has brought to the attention of MAG, and we received that, and that's mainly the portion, the reason why we received these funds was to correct that alignment. The previous two phases that we did on Winchester Road about two, three years ago, we installed a sixty-inch cast-and-place pipe underground on the west side of the street. This was the segment between Southern and Sixteenth Avenue. We also included bicycle lanes and sidewalk curb and gutter. So, this portion here will also connect that storm drain, and we'll be able to install catch basins so we can capture all that drainage in that previous phase that we weren't able to do so before. So, the improvements for this project, again, it's a roadway improvement project. We'll do the alignment at Southern Avenue by adding an additional travel lane, so then that way, from Twenty-Ninth Avenue all the way to Old West Highway, it'll be three lanes, bicycle lane, sidewalk, curb, gutter, streetlights. We'll also include sidewalk on, I know this as the east side, but there will be sidewalks, curb and gutter on the west side. And the drainage channel will also be covered because we're going to put a pipe on that side, and well, that drainage channel will no longer be there. Or it'll just be a small one, it won't be as deep as it is, and it won't be rock-lined either, making it less maintenance for Public Works Department. So, the cost estimate here, as I mentioned before, this is amendment number two. The reason for this second amendment was for the fact that the first amendment, we decided we weren't going to go through the ADOT consultant side of it to use their designer, so we ended up using a set of plans that we already had, and ADOT was okay with us using our own on-call consultant to do the design. So, that's why in the first amendment, you see that there's a negative three hundred and twenty dollars. As for amendment number two, with the increased construction costs, the city's portion is only three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Circled in blue is twenty-two thousand, four twenty-five. That is the amount that the Water District is going to pay for their water relocation facilities because we're still working on these utility clearances. So, that's an agreement that the Water District will have with ADOT and the ADOT contractor. So, again, this will go on consent agenda for May 7th. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Presentation, discussion of Rodeo Ground's master plan. Liz.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of Council, Liz Langenbach, Parks from Recreation Director. I also have with me tonight Dave Butler, our Park Superintendent, and then members of the J2 Engineering and Design Staff will be also helping to present tonight. So, just a really quick background on rodeo events, on the Rodeo Event Center. So, just as a reminder, we entered into a lease agreement with a BLM in nineteen eighty-six under a Recreation and Public Purpose Act. That allowed us to develop that property and use it free of charge, but it prohibited commercial use. In 2006, our original master plan was adopted, and shortly after that time, we did do the first amenities in that plan. So, the covered grandstands and the current restroom and concession facility was around a million dollars. We were able to complete that, and then the Great Recession hit in the next 2007, 2008, and so just funding became a really problematic area, and so... And so anything in that original master plan was halted at that time. In the meantime, just learning that we could not do all the things that we'd like to do there, it really made us stop to think about what were our amenities that we would improve, knowing that we wouldn't be able to do all the events and the different things that we'd like to do. So at that point in time, we pursued purchasing the rodeo grounds. And it was nice, all of you were a part of our celebration. When in June twenty twenty-three, we were able to purchase that property and complete that whole process with the BLM. And then October sixth was our big celebration, and that was the kickoff to our input gathering from the community. So all of those stakeholders were invited to share input of learning about that we would be going into a master planning process to update that plan and look to see that, knowing that two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-three, there might be some different needs than what we thought we might have had back in two thousand and six when we originally did the master plan. November fourteenth, J-two Engineering and Design led a planning session with our current stakeholders. So all of the event planners in our community, Last Dutchman Days, all of our nonprofit groups that currently hold activities and events out there, Mounted Rangers, our East Valley Archers Association, all of our different horse community groups that do a lot of events out there. We all gathered November fourteenth and they went through a needs assessment, goals and wants and desires. So that way, J-two could take back that information. The members of the J-two staff could take back that information and draft the master plan. Additionally, we met with, they've met with staff, and then we met individually with all of you guys to kind of share with you what our first draft looked like and what we'd be taking to our commission. And on February seventh, we presented that first draft to the community for their first chance to give back input, as well as those stakeholders. We're all invited to that open house. And that evening, we also presented the draft to the Parks from Recreation Commission and received all of their input and feedback. And so gathering the council input, the community and stakeholders input in our commission, the, whoop, whoa, I just kind of skipped right ahead. The staff with J-two took all of that feedback and they'll be here tonight to present a little bit about all, what that master plan looks like today. So any of the minor changes, and most of them were pretty minor, some things just to capture on there. And so they'll present that here in a few minutes. But before Kurt comes up and I introduce him, I just wanted to share briefly, as a reminder to our group, the area that we're talking about. So Prospector Park is this, I don't know what color green we'll call that, but that is the Prospector Park lease. And the part that we are master planning right now is truly the twenty acres within, this is the actual purchased property. So just keeping that in mind, that everything, everything outside of that rectangle is really on the Prospector Park lease. We will be showing you and will show this in our master plan, parking and a lot of the area that's outside of that purchase area. We do have permission from BLM to continue using it for parking, as well as our city operating maintenance, those types of things that are not part of the commercial use. The only thing we wouldn't be able to do is have a commercial entity come and utilize that parking lot or charge for, you know, fees. We could charge for reasonable fees to park there at some point in time, as long as those funds go back into whatever we bring in, that those go back into the Prospector Park maintenance and operation, which would be not a problem at all since we invest quite a bit into the ongoing operations of Prospector. Couple of things I just want to bring to your attention. So this is the current rodeo ground site map. So as we talked about, in the most recent improvements are the covered grandstands and then the restroom and concession facility over here. And so we just want to kind of keep highlighting to everybody that the master plan is meant to be conceptual in thought. So we're, you know, just like Raquel and all of us have talked about, you know, when we go out for projects, sometimes it might be multiple years before you get through design approvals, find funding and all of that. And so things can change. And so we really want to think about this. This is our wish list of items that we want to make sure are captured here, that we've thought of all the things that we want to have there and see how they fit. But they could be moved around slightly, or they could change when we go to the next date. So please keep in mind that the plan that we're discussing is gonna be very conceptual in nature. It will be implemented in phases based on funding. We might learn that we all hit the lottery somehow and bring in enough revenue that the entire thing will be funded all at one time, or it might be multiple phases. We are recommending three phases to start off with as we look at this, and you'll learn more about that tonight. We focused on areas of maximum benefit as we prioritize those phases. So what are the things that event planners could utilize immediately, that would have the most bang for buck, that the majority of events and activities could utilize immediately? What are the things that could offer improvement right away? And then finally, the master plan, one of the other major goals is to ensure that it stays, is a multipurpose facility. So while it is certainly equestrian focused, it needs to be able to, we want it to operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year, if that's possible, and have multiple events throughout the facility. Sometimes two or three events on the same day if they meet the, you know, parking requirements and they can, we can manage that. We think there's a lot of things we can do to maximize use, and so that is another major goal of our master plan. So without further ado, I'm gonna invite up Kurt Montai. He is with J-two. He'll share a little bit more about himself and JT's firm. But you'll be very familiar with Kurt as well as J-two. They designed Flatiron Park most recently and then, well, Dog Park most recently, Flatiron Park before that. But they designed our original master plan for the rodeo grounds, and they've done a lot more things like that throughout. They've done many things for us, but also have a lot of experience working with other cities throughout the city. So Kurt Montai.
Thank you, Liz. Hi, Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. And I'd like to go over the rodeo grounds' master plan. But I'm, like Liz mentioned, I'm Kurt Montai. I'm a landscape architect with J-two. And then also here tonight, I have Maria Rios, who is a landscape designer and a former equestrian herself. So she's had a lot of input on this master plan, so. Like Liz mentioned, we've done a lot of projects with the city, one of them being the master plan in two thousand and six. And then we've also done other projects for other towns and cities. So we've done the Queen Creek Rodeo and Event Center down in Queen Creek. We've also done master planning, basically master planning only for the town of Taylor, the town of Florence. And then we did do some projects at the rodeo grounds in Casa Grande. So we do have a good background in rodeo event spaces. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to help you guys out, too, and, and give you a master plan that you can utilize here in the future events, so. With that, I'll kind of go through, where's my, here we go. So like Liz mentioned, you've seen the, the master plan. We've only done a few tweaks here and there to it. Some of it's just, you know, text that we have changed. And we've kind of shortened up and adjusted the bleacher system and the pens. So just kind of to go through here, as you know, I'll just kind of go through the twenty acres. So we, we added in, there's ADA stalls along this edge, the northern edge of the Equestrian Center with an overhead feature as you come into the rodeo grounds from that spot. And those are, whoops.
You want me to go back?
Yeah, apologize, sorry, I hit the wrong button. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. So these walkways shown here in gray, these are concrete walkways. That would be ADA accessible as you can get through the event center and then also into the bleachers themselves. So we do have additional bleachers. You have your existing bleachers here with approximately two thousand seats. And then we're adding in bleachers along the southwest corner here. And then adding, proposing bleachers here on the east side also. And then wrapping around to the north side where we then tie into the announcer's booth there in the center of the arena. We also have the bucking chutes in the center of the arena, right in this location here, and then pens. And again, like Liz mentioned, this is a very high level. We don't have everything worked out. It's more for spatial, you know, to make sure we have the room for those, those pieces that we want. So when we do get into the phasing and the, the construction documents of, like, say, the pens, that's when we'll start looking at gates. We'll have more stakeholder meetings and meet with those people to get the best, you know, pens and movement for the cattle. We also, you know, just kind of improved the warm-up arena here on this side. So just kind of adding in a little bit more fencing and then also, you know, the size a little bit larger there in that side there. Maintenance yard for all of the, the events and to keep the equipment to run the events along with the, the show office here. So there'd be a show office in that area. We also, just to the east of that, we have covered stalls. There's approximately sixty there, ten by ten stalls. Those could be utilized for renting out during events and kind of a revenue generator for that. We see that happening quite a bit. And also, the check-in for the check-in area. When we were discussing the, the location for that, the, the community and the rodeo events organizers really liked it back in this area. So we, we kept it in this area for them. And then we also have RV spaces along this backside. And that can be for the, the event coordinators or on the other side, it could be for renting out to event participants in that area. This is a large, large open space area. This is currently where the carnival is held in this area. So there are, there's still a lot of area in this, in this spot to expand on that. You know, expand the carnival, make it a little bit larger. There's also areas in the shade structures for, you know, cooking or you could have, you know, bands playing underneath there, you could have a dance hall. I think, you know, we're kind of leaning towards the rodeo side. But, you know, there's also, you know, the cowboy church that goes on in there and that they could hold their events in that, too. Or it could be for a wedding venue or something like that. So there's multiple options you can do underneath the shade structure at that point. And then in the future, you know, raised event space and stage area. This is a nice, large event area that you could hold those larger concerts. Again, there could be wedding venues in that area, too. So it's, it provides a large area for any type of those events that you'd like to put on there. You could, you know, move movies in the park or, you know, concert level events in that area there. So that is the open space here. Those are areas that we heard are utilized by a lot of the other events and, and the stakeholders in that. So we kept those areas as close and as large as we could in that, too. So, moving on. So like Liz mentioned, we looked into the phasing of the project and what's the best way to phase this? What's the best way to, one, utilize the funds for, and get the bang for the buck? You know, what's the things that you could start using right away and start generating some revenue? The other thing is also that we looked at is what can we do and minimize the impacts? So if we go through phase one, and if we go then on to phase two, we don't want to go back and disrupt what we did in phase one. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. You know, what type of, type of infrastructure could you get in phase one? And that's one of the things that, it's not shown on this plan, but utilities is one of the, one of the big things that you'd want to do and not disrupt. So you'd want to make sure that you have those lines coming in, tap off of those to a certain area, and then you'd be able to build phase two or phase three from that. So in phase one, like I mentioned, is the utilities. We've broken this out with Liz and Dave and kind of gone back and forth on, you know, what would be the best for phase one, two and three. So we have utilities, the ADA parking, vendor walk, the shade structure, the coverage stalls and drainage improvements, RV spacing with hookups and an overhead entry. And that is the kind of bluish area right in here. That would be the phase one. That's what we'd envision phase one being, is this area here, and doing the improvements for that. And then phase two gets a little bit larger. And that would be the bleachers, announcer's booth, livestock and holding pens, reworking those, reconfiguring the warm-up and main arena footing. There's a cell tower that was located right here, just north of the, the maintenance yard. And then the show office would be in phase two also, along with the maintenance yard. And then in phase three, phase three is the large yellow space. So that would be the main things, and that is the raised event space and walkways, the additional walkways getting to that area there. And then the, the stage and the event space and the, the building. And then it'd be, the others would be improving the parking lots that you see here in yellow and any kind of landscape with that. So those are kind of the, the way we broke it out. Liz mentioned also, we kind of want to keep the, the phases low right now, but I'd hate to see you have too many phases. It's always good to have a kind of a minimum phase. I'd hate to go over, you know, five or six phases. But we felt this was a good, good portion. And I believe Liz will talk a little bit more about the budget and, and moving forward with that. Do I have one more?
Any questions?
Oh, sorry. I do have one more. It's, this is some of the elements that we were looking at. These are just conceptual, just ideas of event spaces. So you can see in the upper left here is the event space and stage. Again, these are just concepts and just ideas. This one here is at East Mark, I believe. And this one, I'm not sure where this one is, but it's, you know, similar to like what we would be anticipating or, or looking at to do in those areas. And I was actually at the zoo the other night, and they have a really great little pavilion and stage area. That was really interesting and it was really nice. It was played out really well. So there are some that we can look at locally, too. And then again, these are the covered bleachers, similar to like the ones that you have out on site now. Announcer's booth, this one's built into this, into the bleachers. We were kind of looking and talking back and forth about maybe it's an individual building versus being built into the bleachers. So when we get to that point in that stage, we'd look into, you know, what's the best way to do that and cost efficient. These are some of the barns, the covered stalls. These are portable stalls or they can be kind of, you know, semi-permanent. They can be taken down fairly easy. They're back-to-back, so you have entrance on, on either side. And we had approximately sixty barns in the, in the master plan. Here's the covered stalls. This is a little bit up-close event, or excuse me, you know, look at this. And then we also have the events here. This is an event, you know, where we're looking at the sidewalk and how you can have booths and, and vendors off to either side of those and have a nice clear walkway down through there. And then some other events also here, you know, this is the tractor, I believe the tractor show here in Apache Junction. And then this is the recent, actually a photo of the carnival at the rodeo days. And then some of the styles of shade structures that are options. There's lots and lots of different types of shade structures and, and forms that you could utilize. So these, we thought, worked really well and some kind of lean towards the, the barns of the southwest that we see with a higher, higher vent and everything, so. Are you asking for questions or...
Yeah, you can make questions.
Okay, yeah, if you do.
I have, I have one. The sidewalks?
Yes.
They're to be this wide?
Yes, the width would probably, we were looking at twenty-foot width. So that would be able for an emergency vehicle also. And then that would also be thickened, like a thickened edge or like a six-inch concrete. We'd have that structurally designed. But what we've done in the past is about six inches of concrete and then a four-inch.
And would you feel like that won't encroach on the carnival? Having twenty-foot strip down the middle of it?
No, the, if I can go back here real quick.
They would maybe line it with their games and their food.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, the idea. It's, it's probably difficult to see, there's little, a light... It's, it's probably difficult to see, there's little, a light lines here. There, those are ten-foot by ten-foot vendor booths. So they, yes, they could line those. The rodeo could utilize that.
Oh, so I guess I was referring to the one that leads up to the raised event stage.
Oh, this one here, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So, oh, yeah, they could line.
But that would be also about twenty feet wide?
It would, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we were kind of anticipating. A nice big promenade. I mean, we could, you know, it could be sixteen, it could be.
No, no, no.
Something, it's, you know, either, either way.
Oh, yeah, it's fun.
Yeah, I, I thought you meant the north-south ones that would go through there. Those would be probably more vehicular access. The one going out, it depends on what you want to use it for. If there's food trucks, you could put food trucks out there, then we would want a wider.
Sure.
Drive that way.
I have a question. Liz, I don't know what your planned use is for the stage over here on the far east side, but I'm just curious why it's in phase three? If it's going to be a nice stage that could be utilized as a moneymaker, why isn't it in stage one and get it in use?
So really just money. I think it's just one of those things that we could have plenty of concerts where, in fact, most event places will bring in a portable stage. We have a beautiful stage right now that could easily be accommodating a large state or a large concert or a large event. And so it's really more of a, as we grow and as activities and events grow, we find ways to afford it. If council chose later on, and we'll have this discussion here at the end, is, you know, what are the next steps for deciding funding and all of that? But that's kind of our thinking as of right now. Same as, just by the way, I know it was mentioned multiple times about, we want to utilize these great bleachers maybe for a concert or something. So there, this would be designed in such a way to bring our stage in or somebody to come in. Major event planners, they pay for putting in major stage setup and bringing in portable stages.
So that, that was my next question, actually. I'm curious on why, I mean, why wouldn't we just use the arena for any stage performances? Because it's already got the seating.
Mainly just because different concerts call for different types of things. So there's a lot of concerts where people just like to bring out their lawn chairs and set up. And so that's one idea. We would definitely utilize some there in the event arena, but it would also limit what we could do up against it. So, you know, that means that the arena itself has to be changed a little bit, the footings, the, all of that to bring in a stage. There's some different things we'd have to do. But additionally, once it's fully built out, we'd be able to have, I mean, there's tons of venues where you have two major stage setups. So one down on this end and you can only hear it on this end and you have another stage over here on this side and you have two venues that is part of some of the major concerts that are out there right now.
So you're saying, you know, like even if it was Lost, Lost Dutchman Days, we could be having something in the arena and maybe we have music playing out at the stage years down the road. So you got two different types of people that are there.
Yeah, yeah, and they could, that would make it a more, more different ideas that the rodeo group could decide, you know, instead of having their band right there. And, and again, I don't know what they would want to do, but that's certainly an option down the road.
Mayor?
Yes?
Liz, could different organizations in our community reach out to you and, or reach out to the city and pool some funds together and sponsor a section of a build? For instance, the possible hitching posts up there in the corner. Down the road, it would be a great spot for all the different horse organizations here in town. Gather up some money and, and build those hitching posts and maybe build a corral around it so that if a horse did break loose from its ties, it wouldn't get out into the parking lot or any other place because there would be a second barrier around it.
Just like now, anytime anybody wants to donate funds to help with stuff, we're always open to that. We'll, we'll have, we'll keep taking questions, but we are going to move on eventually to the cost and I'll share that with you and that might be another opportunity to kind of share that there's a lot of things that maybe those groups could contribute to. But it is, there are some pricey things and then there are other things that might be perfect for organizations to donate to. Okay, so, and Kurt can come back here if you think of something in a minute, but I just want to go through the last couple of quick slides. So this is the tough part. So in addition to during the general, during this master plan process, J2's experience with, and their staff, their experience in doing all of these projects. So they have a whole algorithm for looking at what is the going cost for things. And right now in today's dollars, looking at each item, and so this, we have a list of about twelve pages worth of the expenses of every single thing that would be developed in each phase that was identified on that map. And so we just listed some of the highlights for each one, so you know what's kind of covered in this. But phase one is about four and a half million dollars. So when you ask why are we not going to do a certain thing in one phase versus the other? That's the main thing is, it's a lot of money. So this is a twenty-three million dollars total. If somebody were to have the money now and be able to do it, that's what it would cost to do everything in the master plan, breaking up into the first, into the three phases. So phase one is four and a half million dollars. I listed out some of those key elements that Kurt covered. Phase two is nine and a half million dollars and the, this is kind of a rough estimate. I rounded up based on that twenty-three million dollar overall cost. We put the covered bleachers in phase two. Lost Dutchman Days, they could use extra bleacher space today, but they're the only event that could use extra bleachers. So maybe in the meantime, we just continue to rent bleachers and make that do until we have more events that could benefit from the expanded bleacher situation. And then phase three is another nine million dollars. That's where we have the raised event stage. So that raised event stage is approximately two-point-eight million dollars. So we are looking at, so these are major structures and some of them have, you know, other building amenities within them. So I think we mentioned multiple times about the need for more restrooms as we get events. Each one of the major building structures has restrooms as an option in those. So those are just really high-ticket items to put any type of a building or a structure in place. So these are the general costs for it. It's a little bit staggering and, but it's just kind of, again, something so that people understand that this is what it costs to do kind of some major, major parks and different types of amenities that we can use for the future. Next steps, we are wanting just to gather your last feedback and finalize this conceptual plan. That would complete this part of the process is just completing the master plan to say, yeah, if we had all the money in the world, this is what we would want to be able to do with it in this space. We would be bringing it back at some point that you guys determine. So again, if there's more feedback today and we have more work to do, we'll go back and do that. If you feel like you're close to being ready, we'll bring it back to a nearby council meeting for final adoption of the master plan and the phasing process that we've already identified. And then that final stage will be determining funding source and beginning of the phase one design. So whatever phase one ends up being, starting that design, so that way we can get started on some of, of implementation.
Is there a chance for any grant funding to fund some of this stuff?
You know, absolutely. There, so I think the biggest key is that we have lots of needs in the community and we certainly recognize that. You know, there's a whole lot of other things. So yes, there are. I would say they're in that million-dollar to two-million-dollar contribution towards it. I would also just say though, we have a lot of other projects in queue. So we have the CAP trail that's kind of in queue for some of that funding, some other major trails that are in queue for applications in that. So we would continue to look for that, but that's about the price range of, of the grants that are out there right now that we would be eligible for. There might be others that we can piggyback on top of that. So that would be one way. Corporate sponsors is another way to kind of little by little. Lost Dutchman Days, you know, raised a lot of great money. They've talked about possibly contributing towards certain amenities that are meaningful to them or important. They've funded many of the amenities that are at the rodeo grounds right now, smaller amenities. So those are some options as well.
Liz, one question. What plans, if any, are there for Parks and Rec to utilize some outside concern promoter to bring in events that'll bring in money so this can pay for itself? Or do you plan on doing that all in-house?
So I would caution that there's any way for this to pay for itself. So we've met with Westworld, we've met with Queen Creek's folks, Horseshoe Park. I am told that in every model other than in Las Vegas, not one single one is bringing in the amount of money to pay for themselves. And what they are working on is trying just even bring in an amount that pays for the operation and the ongoing maintenance. That's challenging in and of itself. Most cities see that it as more of a revenue generating in other ways. So they're bringing in tourism dollars, bringing, attracting people to the community, bringing money in that way. And so at Westworld, for example, they really rely on Barrett-Jackson and all those events that come to Westworld. They're not making any money and they are not paying for the operation of that facility. They're just bringing in other money that they're bringing in as a city that they feel is worth that investment. I would recommend, we're just very conservative in our department and in our city, that we start small and that we bring in, you know, that we implement what we think we can bring people to and invest in. Right now, we do have staff that has been assigned to working more events. We plan on having staff that will bring in some of those early-on things that we can do right away with just some of the minor amenities. As far as bringing in a whole promoter, you know, that's certainly a possibility. That's just another person that you pay. That's just another expense on top of the other expenses. So that is definitely something, when we get to that next stage, that we can bring back some of those specifics for you so you can kind of see what are all the options out there. We've talked to a lot of different facilities and I think just sharing with you what their experiences would be a good step after we, after we adopt our master plan.
Thank you.
Liz, realistically, is this a five, ten-year plan?
You know, I think we just are in such an uncertain, I don't know if that's a better question for Matt and Bryant, but.
I would love to take a stab at this.
Go ahead.
Okay. We can do hard things in the city. And remember, we did a point-two percent and a point-two percent sales tax throughout this process to bring in investment. And we've done similar projects like this. We never thought from a staff standpoint that this would be what we would call traditionally an enterprise fund. And I think Liz did an outstanding job of explaining, when you set up an enterprise fund, that would be like running a business. Rodeo grounds is not that, although we would like to get some council policy on what your feelings are, just like we did the recreation center. So the recreation center was a combination of three funding sources back then. Savings that we're working on as a city, meaning some savings in your, in your, in your fund balance. Impact fees, which we will also be having to, once we get this process done, council adopts the master plan and then you adopt this next step, it gives us credence to go out and look for. And, and when we do, what's it called, Matt, the IIP, Infrastructure Improvement Plan? It becomes part of the process for impact fees to help us develop a funding system that is part of what funded your recreation center. So you've probably heard me say, I love the rec, the rec center, I love the city hall, it's paid for. And then the last item was just the fees that come in. And so what we had thought about was what percentage, and I don't know exactly what the number was, but the goal was to be somewhere around fifty percent of every year that the taxpayer pay for and that the rest would be fees. Similarly, I think the goal, at least we would like to see at some point the council tell us, what are you looking for in terms of your balance of what could bring back revenue to fund it? But ultimately, this first four million, we, we went and financed the recreation center through a Goda loan. It was your first finance ever. It was a seven-million-dollar loan to help pay for the recs, the rec center, the city hall, and the municipal court. And the total amount to build both of those over a three-year period was eleven million dollars. And then over the next four or five years, we collected that new revenue in impact fees and in the point-two percent that helped pay off that revenue. So in terms of the ability to do this, I'm not saying that we could get after it incrementally. If we look at what we call pay-as-you-go, it could be fi, I don't know. What are we, what are we putting in the budget right now, a million bucks?
So we, we're only putting in about five-hundred thousand. We're putting in enough, because realistically, next year, what we would accomplish is really the design. Again, you heard tonight, we say it every single time, it takes about that amount of time just to design. So we put in the budget to do the first phase of design and maybe there'd be a little bit to start the construction process at the very end of next fiscal year.
We actually did add it back in.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And we're just putting final touches on the proposed budget, but it's about a million dollars.
Okay, thanks.
But that will attack the design and we'll see how far we can get with that. But, but my point is still the same, like that's, that's a pay-as-you-go system, right Liz? So then that's four years to get four, well, really, it's not. I don't know, Kurt, that includes all cost for architect, the four, four-point-five million, is that design? Yeah.
Twenty-three million.
Twenty-three million and so. Okay, so yeah, that's great news. So then that's a not another ten percent or so. So that's that twenty-three million, but you know, if you give us direction, Bryant, go figure out a funding plan. You know, I've got forty-four million that needs to be found for a week's wash. We've got, you know, potential revenue streams out there that could go away, like we've talked about Santan Valley and residential sales tax. So we've just got a lot to balance in this, in these coming years, but we've also got some good runtime revenue coming in.
So Bryant, so this is another concern of mine, so maybe not, based on when the budget and when you can start this, I mean, we do have, are probably the biggest event for the city every year in this location. Is construction going to be in the way?
So that's an excellent question. I think those are all things that we would work hard on, so we, we work on things like that right now with every, you know, improvement that we do. The way the phased approach works, you know, we're not touching the rodeo arena itself or some of those things. So those would have to be things we'd have to plan for. How do we work around that? And I think when you get down into, at some phase, there might be some, some impact, but I think that's would be something that we'd be working towards to, to try to rule out, especially for the major events. So Lost Dutchman Days, Lost Dutchman Marathon are both major things that have to happen outside of that.
Right, so what I mean, it's not like we could say, okay, we're going to start March. So that way by next year, because it's, it all depends on when the money's there, right? It all depends on how the budget rolls out and where, where we're coming from. So that, what if it's like, okay, here's October, okay, we got some, we could start something, but that would be a bad time to start something like that.
That is the dilemma of every single thing that we do in city government, of roads, of any type of project that we.
You don't have any dilemma on the roads, no way.
You know, the MGC addition, you know, there's just a lot of, you know, right now, we're doing all the flooring throughout it and that's challenging for the members themselves for that amount of time. And so I think those are things we'd work through with those groups. I think if they're important enough amenities, then we'll either figure out ways of doing it. I, please do not quote me in saying that we would ever like not have a year of Lost Dutchman Days. That's not what I'm saying. Those are conversations we would have with groups. And if those, honestly, if once we learn what we have to do, if those are deal breakers, then we don't expand. I mean, there's just some important decisions that we'll have to make. There's only so much that we can do with reality.
So I just, one more question, I think, I think Darryl, you had a question, but this, this is minimal. Is this an aerial shot of this year's Dutchman Days?
Um, no, I think that might be from two thousand and seventeen. We do have aerial shots from this year that we shared with the planning committee.
I was just curious, the way, because the way you set up the parking.
It's pretty, I'd say it's pretty accurate, right? Yeah, it's pretty similar to how it's set up now.
Liz, how many people came through the gate this year for Lost Dutchman Days?
We had our wrap-up meeting, thirteen thousand? Okay, yeah, thirteen thousand for the variety of carnival, rodeo, all that.
So thirteen thousand people came just onto the grounds, not necessarily going to the rodeo itself?
Correct, all to get, that's gate.
Through the gate.
Over the three-year, three-day period.
Peter, is that tickets sold?
No, so that is gate entry, not tickets to the rodeo or anything like, it's just, and to get to the rodeo, you had to pay your gate fee so they could count.
Oh, okay.
They counted how many people came overall to the event.
I've heard figures much larger than that, but I think sometimes it was a little inflated, I think.
In the past or something.
This would, this past year would have been, I think, the most.
Right.
The most attendees we've had.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like thirteen thousand's low.
Well, think about, you only get three thousand at the, at the.
How many parking spots do we have?
Thank you, Dave, about two thousand. With all the expanded stuff that the parks team did, we have about two thousand.
So roughly, you know, four to, four thousand to.
And so that thirteen thousand, in addition to that. And so that 13,000, in addition to that, there's probably about 100 volunteers out there. You know, there's, so some of those numbers change, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was gate, that was gate count. Yeah, you've got vendors, volunteers, yeah, there's probably another 1,000 probably.
So do you have any other questions for me at this time?
No.
We would be, so if it's fine with you, so if you think this is okay, we would be bringing back the master plan for adoption. That is not, and kind of the phasing plan. If you, if there's things you want us to work on more, you can let me know that tonight, and we can work on that with you guys individually in the meantime. And funding is really kind of the next step, so that we'll have to come back and we'll bring that as a policy discussion. Like we said, we earmarked about a million dollars for next year, and then you would have time here in this year to be giving us direction on how we would utilize that, if it's approved in the budget.
I think you guys did such an excellent job of listening before designing because, you know, getting together with the stakeholders, talking and giving us an opportunity for input, a lot of people. It's a well-thought-out plan.
Your Honor. Your Honor. Question, Liz. Okay, not that we have a unlimited budget, but is a million dollars reality? I mean, adequate? Because we're just talking about how construction costs are just doubling and tripling.
So the million dollars, again, is really just adequate for what can be accomplished next year. So again, the design fee, it's definitely enough for us to get started on design of whatever phases we decide to include in our design, and then a little bit more if we chose to start construction right away. We would be having, again, we're going to be having a policy discussion on what we're really talking about, and that would be budgeted for in the future year. So a million is realistically all that we could even do.
Okay.
Next year.
Yeah, Mayor? Can you go back a couple slides to the first one where it shows not necessarily phasing? Keep going. Right there's good, perfect. The sediment basin, you have this white line down along through, is that like a walking path?
No, so those are just elevation markings.
Lines?
Correct. Can you?
Yeah, those are contours, so just how deep the basin is.
Yeah. Okay. And is there a big need for that big of an area? It seems like, you know, real estate's always a prime thing.
It is, but we're, we're taking off-site water, so there's a wash that comes down that's off of this page.
So that's going to be engineered enough to handle all that?
Right, yeah, and so it'll bring it in, and that's a sediment basin kind of fills up, and then it meters itself out.
Sure.
So there is an exit down to the E, or excuse me, the west of that at the end. It would meter out across or under Lost Dutchman and continue on.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so then if I have heads nodding, we will bring back this plan just for adoption, and we'll talk further about funding and other policies.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mel, return. Thank you.